Well, thank you all for being here. I can't stay away.
Can you turn it on?
Okay.
I didn't bring an extra sweater this time because I feel it's gonna be quick. I won't be freezing.
I brought one, just in case.
Oops. I'll probably get too hot down once again.
Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I guess I'll lead today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of the agenda for this very special meeting. Who would like to make that motion?
I move we approve the agenda.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is executive session, so pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A7, the Board may vote to go into executive session for the purpose of discussions or consultations with designated representatives of the FHUSD to consider its position and instruct its representatives regarding negotiations for the purchase, sale, and or lease of real property. I'll make a motion that we adjourn to executive session. Do I have a second?
I'm second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are temporarily adjourned.
End it up giving it to Allie Schreier, the front office lady in high school. And then...
Okay, I'll make a motion that we resume the regular session. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're back in the regular business meeting. Public comments, there's nobody here, so I think there are no public comments. So on to action items. So I will make a motion that we approve the updated ESCOR instructions on the land sale agreement with Toll Brothers. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Okay, information and discussion items. So, as we all know, there's a vacancy on the Board, and what was distributed to you, and hopefully you had a chance to look at, so basically, we could, applicants do not have to apply to us, okay? We do have the ability, if we choose, to take applicant applications and make a recommend, decide whether to make a recommendation to Superintendent Boggs. So the question, or the discussion point for today is basically to decide if we want to have a role, do we want to create an application? If so, what would be the content of that application? And I made suggestions here, and there's one addition that I didn't, that was not included, namely to attach your resume or CV.
Yes.
As part of it. And so that's part of what we want to discuss today. And then the other document that you had is the announcement that if we decide to have a role to play, or probably, there should be an announcement on the website anyway, to instruct people that there's a vacancy, and this is what you can do, you know, if you wish, and then the Monday, December 1 deadline, which, whatever we discuss, I guess we can't approve until next Wednesday, so it leaves kind of short, but if people are interested, presumably, in a week and a half, they can make that decision and do that. So, so I guess the interesting is suggestions. I mean, the first thing would be to decide, what are your feelings on, do we want to have a role or not? My feeling is we should have a role.
I agree. And I think these questions are pretty much the same as what we had last time.
They're a little trimmed. I trimmed them down and made them a little clearer, I think clearer and fewer of them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I like that you did trim it down some. I actually think it could be trimmed a little bit more.
And that's certainly an option.
Especially since we're gonna ask them to attach a CV and resume. So in other words, right, typically, you're gonna include things like participation in boards.
Right.
Those types of things, so we might be able to cut out, you know, an additional question, since we're asking for the CV.
Unless we want to say, "Do you attach your resume? Please, you know, answer the following things in there." So this way, we know if they've been on boards or anything like that, they could just put in the CV and not put another answer to another question. You know, include disinformation, if we want to do that.
So if we do the, "Please attach your resume or CV," we could potentially get rid of that last describe, past participation.
Right, right.
And get rid of, "Please describe any past or current involvement you have had in our district, or in the town of Alton Hills," or...
No, well, I don't know.
I don't know, that may...
I don't know, I would like to have that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think just trimming the last one.
The last one.
If we're gonna ask for the CV.
Okay. What do you think about the, "Describe your qualifications and/or your reasons for wishing to serve on the FHUSD governing board," as a standalone or an addition? Is that too much, or would it be enough to do it on its own? And attach your resume and CV?
I think that would be okay to leave it.
So in addition to the questions, or instead of the questions?
It's almost like if they answer it in the CV, they don't have to answer the questions separate.
Yeah.
Well, going back to getting petitions signed, one of the very first questions by everybody, including the interview down at the county, was, "Why do you want to do it?" So...
My first question was, "Are you really sure you want to do it?"
That was the second question.
And that took up like three quarters of the interview.
I guess the only other thing is, I really thought it was a little vague when it says current involvement with the district.
I mean, the idea there is, are you a volunteer, you know, what do you do?
A parent.
A parent, yeah, that's the idea. I mean, the wording certainly can be, but that's...
Maybe engagement.
We can do engagements instead of involvement?
I can live with involvement.
Engagement.
You like engagement better?
And Lillian, were you suggesting that your idea was that we could say, right, they could submit a quote-unquote "letter of interest," right, the 250 words or less, and their CV, resume, and/or they could do the letter of interest and answer the questions? Is that what you're saying?
I think so.
So that some folks who maybe don't have a CV, maybe in their occupation, they just don't typically have a CV.
Yeah, right, they would just answer the question. Rather than having like 500 words altogether or something.
Yeah. How about, "Please attach your resume or CV if you have one?"
Yeah.
Yeah, because that will tell us a lot.
If you have one, yeah.
If you have one. Okay. So what I'm hearing is, we give the, we do, "Please attach your resume or CV if you have one." We include to describe your qualifications, 250 words or less. Is that good, 250 words? I figured that should be enough to...
Yes.
...get it out. And then the alternative, you could do that, or you choose to do the CV and resume and ask, answer the questions, instead of the 250 words. Is that what I'm hearing?
That sounds right.
Okay.
So the only other thing to think about, not necessarily add, but when Kim and I went to the training session from the county that we sponsored, Ms. Boggs did a, basically, emceed a panel at the end, and asked the superintendents and board members a series of questions. Most of them fit, fit right in with what was here. But there are two of them that sort of stood out, and I jotted them down. One was, "What are the greatest challenges in the next five years, and how will you address?" Okay?
Yeah.
And then, "How do you see technology," and it goes back to your comment a little bit ago, "about AI shaping the future." So those two were a little bit different.
Yeah. Well, the third one here is kind of, "What do you see as current and future challenges for FHUSD and public schools in general?" It's kind of similar to the first one.
Yeah, just put the limit on it. But, you know, you can leave it open like that.
Right.
Yeah.
But I thought you'd appreciate the AI one.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's no secret, I think it's scary. Okay, so does that, so does that kind of meet with everyone's approval?
I think so.
And then, I was communicating with Krista earlier, I don't know if we can, with these questions, if we can try to do a fillable PDF. Because otherwise, you know, if someone downloads it and has to scan it in... You could do a photo PDF? Or a Google, a Google Doc?
A Google form would be easiest way. And then you all have access to the responses.
The Google Doc.
And they would just have to attach their resume or CV. That would be an option to do that.
But you can do an attachment.
Yeah, that would be good.
So Google forms, Lillian, is like a survey, basically. It's not a doc.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not an open-ended doc.
But they just fill in the responses.
It fills the responses. It puts the responses into a spreadsheet, basically.
And then we get it.
And then we can review the spreadsheet.
And that I can do. I do not know how to do a fillable PDF. Not ever large.
Yeah, and I checked that out, have that software to do it either.
I think...
I can get a free, I mean, there's a free software that I could potentially do, but I don't know, I don't want to mess with that.
Yeah, Google form, my form.
Google form is great.
Tech department, see which is best for that.
Okay.
For sure you can do Google form, you'll all get the responses through that, and then, and I believe there's a way to attach.
Attach, yeah. They can attach a CV, that'd be perfect, or whatever they write.
So one other question would be, do we want to put, how many, we're going to forward?
Well, what my understanding is, if we collect the, well, okay, so at the point, if we get all these and review them, and, you know, get together to review them, if we can come up with a consensus of up to three, I think is what the state law says, up to three recommendations to Shelley, if we don't come to a consensus, then we don't have to recommend anything as a board, or we shouldn't recommend it if we don't have a consensus, if it's two to two. My preference is that we forward all the applications to Shelley, that we don't...
My understanding is we're required to forward all of them to Shelley?
I don't think we are, because people don't have to apply to us. But I think it's just, I think it's just fair that anything we get, we forward on.
Yeah.
And whether it's with our recommendations, if we come to some consensus or not. Up to three, or one, or two, I mean, whatever, but that would be, once we have them in.
I think it's consistent with past practices, even those if you're a board.
Yeah.
We would collect them and send them off to the office, and then superintendent's office would make the decisions.
Right.
I think it's...
Because if we don't have a consensus, and we eliminate some, then we're kind of essentially violating a lack of consensus.
I think you'd forward them.
Yeah, okay, so that's good. Okay, so...
And then Rich, you'll need to update, if we go with the Google form, which I think is a great idea.
Well, with this, then, so I'll change, I'll tweak that wording.
Okay.
And then Krista, I'll send you an updated one of this, so that you can work on that. Okay, now the announcement on the, for the website. What do you think about that? This is kind of getting drafted.
That's the part where I was saying, we need to update the language there, to not direct them to email us.
Oh, okay.
Like to fill out the form.
Please complete the attached application and return it as, for instructions or something?
Please complete the attached form.
Form, got it. Which the form should easily say how to return it.
By no later, right, yeah. It'll be a submit, there'll be a submit button on the form, so...
Please complete the attached form and submit it.
Yes. By no later than...
Or complete and submit the attached form. I like that.
Yeah, there you go.
And submit the attached form, so get rid of the addresses listed below. No later than Monday, December 1st, is that still good? Which means we can, in our first meeting in December, we could potentially kind of come to some conclusion about what we want to do, because we have one board meeting in December, right? I think?
Yes.
But it's the third.
It's the third.
So is that enough time for me?
Two days.
So we're gonna review them, and then what are we gonna do?
We would have, now, when we, when we need to review them, is that in public session or executive?
That should be executive session.
Because we're talking about specifics of people, right? It should be executive.
I would have to ask Dave, because when we did this the last time, we, the Board didn't review anything.
Right.
They just forwarded it straight over to the county soup's office. The Board did receive a copy of all the applications.
Right.
But they didn't review and make corrections.
Are we all leaning that we do want to review and see if we come to a recommendation?
I think so.
My guess on this will be that it probably won't be done in a public meeting.
Yeah.
And if you choose to review them right now publicly...
You think so?
I don't think it would fall under... Yeah, I agree.
I don't know, yeah, I mean, that's a question, because it is, we're talking about individual people.
I don't feel comfortable with that.
And their qualifications or lack thereof.
Yeah, so I would say, if we have to review it in public, and it's individuals we're reviewing, I'm not comfortable with that.
No, I'm not comfortable with that at all.
So I would rather just forward everything, if that's how we're gonna do it.
I would like us to sit down together, but I don't think it should be public.
I agree.
I'm just saying, there's very specific reasons you can go into executive session, so I will check and give...
Yeah, check and let us know, so...
So for the next meeting, when you vote on, take the action on these items, you'll know what you can and can't do there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good.
I would just add to the website, if you're having any issues with the form, to contact Krista or something like that.
Yeah, sure.
So if you have someone who can't submit it, they know where to contact.
Okay, I will add that.
Just put the phone number, 5011, 664-5011. Because if they're, I would, I think for a lot of people, it's easier if they go phone and call and talk to somebody versus trying to...
Okay, I'll add that to the end there, get rid of the emails there. Okay. Any other feedback on this website thing?
Are we going to post it on the website and then push it out? Are we going to post it on the website and then push it out? Like, is there a Falcon Focus that's going to be released right after, right?
Every Friday, so once you agree, every Friday after, we'll be in there.
Okay.
And we can do even a special, we can do a special, just blast out to all parents that is separate from the Falcon Focus, that there is an opening, and here's how to do that. So we can do that.
Yeah, and then typically, once it goes out to parents, it spreads into the community.
Next week.
Correct.
Okay, and I'll send all this stuff to you, Krista, the modified language and stuff, in the next couple of days. Okay, any other discussion about this?
Nope.
Okay, good. All right, that moves us on to future action, which is student outcomes, such as report cards and proficiency data, and deciding about this at the next meeting. Dates of upcoming meetings, this is November 19th at 5:00, December 3rd at 6:00 p.m. right here. And a move that we adjourn the meeting, do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thirty minutes.
Not bad.
Yeah.
Now, we have an executive session next week, too.
I, yeah, I...
Or is it just that our meeting's earlier, because it's showing 5:00 p.m.?
Well, it's probably going to be executive, because we're going to accept, we're going to get the counter offer.
Oh, okay.
We should hopefully know by then.
Exactly.